Mr. Heinrichsen.
Mr. Reichen.
Mr. Bell. Mr. Culpepper.
Here.
Mr. Griffiths.
Here.
Ms. Peoples. Mr. Chairman, you do have a form of conduct.
Okay, first item on the agenda is GP 1231.
Uh, yeah, this first item is a GP 1231. It's a special use request to permit a non-industrial use or a use not specifically related to manufacturing in the I-1 industrial zoning district. In particular, this request is for a new 1,987 gross square foot Taco Bell restaurant located at 24024 West Nine Mile. This is on the northwest corner of Nine Mile Road and Telegraph Road. And just for your reference, existing Taco Bell, actually existing Taco Bell restaurants, it's been a Taco Bell or at least a restaurant type use for many years. What the petitioner is looking to do is, let me back up for a second. There's never been a special use on this property because now within the I-1 industrial zoning district, because we're doing a tear down of basically a brand-new restaurant, new site plan, we felt that it would be necessary to go through the special use requests in the I-1 industrial zoning district. So that's why Taco Bell is here tonight is because this is a special use within the I-1. Again, not in the non-industrial use, so again, has to go through this process through the planning commission and ultimately the city council. Again, existing property, existing Taco Bell restaurant, to the north we have a bank, directly to the west there's a small shopping center, to the south we have a gas station, and directly across the street there is another restaurant type use, there's a White Castle there. With regard to existing zoning, we have I-1 industrial on all four sides, both to the north, to the west, to the south across Nine Mile, and to the east across Telegraph Road. Current restaurant Taco Bell, you have a map with your information there, area photo. You can see that circulation really is not the best on that particular piece of property. There's a parking lot directly on the east side of the site, some parking along the north, and the current drive-through actually goes along the west side. They have some issues with circulation. Taco Bell has recently been updating their restaurants with a brand-new template, and basically what you're seeing here is the new template that Taco Bell wants to put on this particular site. Again, nineteen thousand, uh, nineteen hundred square foot building, drive-through, better circulation, and before this was blocked off, it didn't allow access around the site. Now there's better circulation on the site. New template from the standpoint of exterior with block on the bottom, brick, and then other amenities on the building itself, metal, glass, plus additional lighting on the outside. Basically, it's an upgrade to what is there right now. Regarding the parking, that is one of the issues that staff will deal with. Again, you're here to determine whether or not this use should go within the I-1 industrial zoning district. In the I-1 district, staff, planning department actually does the review of the site plans and approvals of site plans. So you're here again tonight to determine whether or not this type of use can go on that site. Again, it's been a restaurant for years. It's just an upgrade to what is currently there right now with better circulation, better-looking building. I will talk about parking, though. They do meet their parking requirements. They meet all the setback requirements for that particular zoning district. And I think with that, I'm going to turn over to the petitioner.
Of course, Mr. Bell.
Sure.
A couple of questions. Did it have to get this permission when it originally went in there?
It hasn't had a special use, it hasn't been had a special use before.
Okay.
Yeah, so it existed without the special use before. It was constructed under that. However, because we have a brand-new site plan, tear down of the building, staff felt it was necessary to go through the special use because an I-1 industrial it requires it.
And has there been any particular problem for this particular kind of use in this location?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Uh, this, I know down at the south end of it there where it is closed off currently.
Right here.
Right. Is there ample room there for people going in that way, to go around to the right?
Yeah, there's enough room between what this vehicle would be in here. This is a very generous radius on here. The fire department has put a template on here, they can get around the site as well. So for a regular vehicle with this such a generous radius here, there's no problem with vehicles making that turn.
But it seems to be one-way all the way around.
It is, yep, it will be one-way all the way around. And again, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the petitioner.
Good evening. Eric Up with Design Engineers, 2183 Plus Drive, Parkland, Michigan, 4814. Here tonight on behalf of Sundance Incorporated, who are franchisees for the Taco Bell Corporation in southeast Michigan. Sundance purchased this facility and building about ten years ago. It's been operating as a Taco Bell with a drive-through for over thirty years, from time around 1980. This was constructed for over thirty years and operating there. And quite inefficiently, quite frankly. As we touched on in this chapter of overview, it has an inefficient traffic movement right now. You can't circumnavigate around the building also, and when you come in off Telegraph Road, you must exit onto Nine Mile Road. Very difficult site to navigate. So when we started early on taking a look at this site, we felt it was best to do a post-it, rebuild completely, tear down the existing building, make parking features, and start from scratch, build a building that's efficient and safe, and do the same with the site, too. So that's what we're presenting to you tonight. We worked closely with the city, with the planning staff, to develop a site layout, which not only meets your standards and requirements, but we feel is safe and efficient also. And that took a lot of thinking outside the box in this particular instance because we have some constraints on the site, that being that the site is a little bit on the smaller side, but we also have a significant right-of-way along Nine Mile Road, which even though the property is described to this area here, we have about an additional twenty or three that we cannot use in this area. And of course, we're encumbered by two frontages which create screening and parking setbacks and things of that nature, which we must, which we want to abide to. We're keeping the existing entrance from Telegraph Road. That was reconstructed within the last couple of years. It's all concrete, it's really nice, we're keeping that. But as you enter in, the circulation pattern changes quite a bit. A patron can come in, there's angled parking along the north end, the west end, and the east end. They can enter into the drive-through lane, which has stacking for ten vehicles, and there's twenty-two parking spaces, and of course, they can circumnavigate around the building and throughout the site efficiently. We have a new entrance along Nine Mile Road that's in very poor shape right now, so we wanted to upgrade that. And of course, we have turning radiuses in here that meet fire department specifications. Now, I think your fire department reviewed it, but we run it through our turning radius program within our CAD files where we can actually take the vehicles and run it through, and it meets the radius requirements for emergency vehicles. Pedestrian access, we provide that off of Telegraph Road here with the extension of the sidewalk and both a signed and painted crosswalk area. The same on Nine Mile Road, both signed and painted crosswalk area, and we've had a painted crosswalk area here to access the barrier-free space along the west side. One of the difficulties in the layout of this site was providing enough drive-through stacking, the ten stacking spaces, without encumbering any of the other areas. Right now, what happens is that the drive-through window's in about this location here, so when a car comes in at about the fifth space, you create this bottleneck area right here as you enter in off of Telegraph Road. That, of course, is not safe for the city, it's not good for Taco Bell, so that was really one of our main objectives here, was to improve that situation. We're able to do that by taking the existing building prototype, we're providing Taco Bell's smallest building prototype, and mirroring the interior and flipping it so that the drive-through pickup is here. So that allowed us to get a significant amount more stacking because now we get to stack around two-thirds of the building and not just a third of the building. So that's provided a big, I think, a pretty big increase in efficiency and also in safety because we no longer have this bottleneck situation on the site. So we're really happy about that and work closely with your planning staff to develop this layout. In regards to the building itself, we've been in your community for thirty years. We didn't want to just come in and plop down an ephesus or stucco-looking Taco Bell, which is what you usually see, and so we're coming in with upgraded building materials. In the first few feet, typically what this is, is really ephesus throughout the entire building, so it looks like a shoebox building with ephesus material throughout, but we've decided to upgrade that. In the first three or four feet, we've got this natural stone product here. This is, well, cultured stone, but it looks natural, and again, adds a lot of mass to the bottom, so it has a timeless feel to the, to the building itself and creates something that is definitely a lot more appeasing. Above it then, for the majority of the building itself, is this brick here. This is a color sample. The renderings tend to come out a little bit more colorful than I would like for some reason, but this is the material here, so you can see that the bricks are substantially earth toned and subdued a lot and fit in with the character of the city. And then the accent orange here, which is, I don't know why it looks like that bright, but it's this color here, it's more of a burnt orange brick, again, in the earth tones, and we feel like a significant upgrade over what the corporation would like us to do, but recognizing we've been here for thirty years, want to be a good neighbor, and want this to, it's on a major intersection, and we feel like this is a great property to upgrade and do it right and make sure that we're being good neighbors here in the community. Rustle, I can sniff your lawn landscaping, we're preserving everything that we can, which is some locust trees and cherry trees along the frontages, and then we're adding a significant amount of landscaping throughout, so you can see a lot of shrubs, a lot of plantings throughout the interior. Again, just to upgrade all these, do something there that's nicer than your standard Taco Bell, something that's upgraded to what is there now. So with that, I'll turn it to the board for any questions.
To the chair.
Culpepper.
I know we're only supposed to present at the I-1 zoning, but two things that stand out to me in this is, number one is, I like the idea of you doing the landscaping, because looking at that corner, that corner could use some, some scooping up, and with the landscaping you have, I think it would definitely set that corner off. The second thing that's appealing to me is the building. I mean, I'm not a Taco Bell eater, don't go Taco Bell, but the decor of the building, reconstruction of buildings will set that corner off, and it looks a lot different than the Taco Bell you see or I think it's soft deal. So I think this is a great contribution to that corner. I mean, I think it would go great.
That was a question, as far as the drive-through lanes, are there going to be changes as far as how that's set up, as far as the drive-through lanes?
Yeah. The drive-through lane is significantly more efficient than what you have now, and that's both because of the building and because of the drive-through functions. So about sixty-five percent of Taco Bell's business is now done through the drive-through, that's actually more than McDonald's and burger places. And so what they've done is, in the new buildings, they actually have two preparation lines, one specific for the drive-through and one specific for the dining room, so allows them to significantly, much more efficiently, prepare the food and get it out through the drive-through, so that turnover's a lot faster, and you don't see the backups that you normally see. Secondly, the way that these are ordered is much more efficient, so there's a order confirmation display on the speaker box, so it cuts down on some of that back-and-forth talk, and the people see their order and make sure that's correct. Particularly with Taco Bell, we've changed what's specifically on their items and such, it helps quite a bit. So that, too, creates just a lot, a lot more efficient than what's there now. That helps Taco Bell, quite frankly, because a lot more people come through the drive-through than, when it's more efficient, and it's just safer for the community, too, so.
Good, good. That's my favorite spot to go for fast food, so I'm using the drive-through, so that's good to hear. And that's just a single lane, right?
Yeah, it's just a single lane, yeah. I know McDonald's recently have a lot of double-lane menu boards and such, but that's not the case here, so.
To the chair, that was a question I was going to ask, is it going to be double-lane, and you're only going to have one, I call it cashier window?
Um, yes.
Only going to be one?
Yes, there's one. There's no prepay window.
Yeah, okay.
Taco Bell studies show that it doesn't improve efficiency at all, so.
Pay here, pick up down, definitely pick up.
Yeah, a lot of times it creates a gap between those two windows that's unnecessary, so.
Okay.
Mr. Bell.
Yes, if I'm looking here right, it appears that out on the corner is where you actually do the ordering?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Another question. And given the fact that about sixty-five percent of your patrons would use the drive-through, which apparently will not be exiting onto Nine Mile, they'll be coming back out and going onto Telegraph.
They can unless they circle all the way back around and go out. And my question was, I'm through that intersection a great deal, particularly going south on Nine Mile and then going west on Nine. And I have noticed that traffic trying to turn left coming out going east, trying to turn east coming out onto Nine Mile, that really creates, it really creates a traffic hazard when you're exiting to the south.
Exiting, turning.
Trying, going left, that's, because they're trying to cross a line, a line of traffic that's wanting to go west on Nine Mile, as well as get into a very short section of Nine Mile there that is waiting at the traffic light, that's backed up, you can way past that exit. And so my suggestion would be to be right-hand, right turn only exiting that exit, and then, of course, it would be right turn only exiting the other exit also, because that's one-way on Telegraph. But would you have a problem with that? I'm just curious.
No, you know, I think we'd, you know, probably like engineering to take a look at it.
Well, sure, absolutely.
Tell them what their thoughts were. I don't see any concern with it really. Really what the traffic movement becomes anyway is because of the concern that you just mentioned.
Yes, that exit is very close to the Telegraph Road intersection and the light there, and that's a pretty busy intersection, as every intersection on Telegraph is.
Right.
But that would be, I don't think, safety concern, I think.
Yeah. We'd be willing, whatever the city thought was best.
But outside of that, it looks like, particularly the facade that you're doing there, I think is a massive improvement. I'm like Mr. Culpepper, I'm not a, much of a fast-food eater anymore, regrettably I was for many years.
Like that corner, that light, that corner.
Right, but I think it will improve the looks of that corner. In fact, I was talking to a couple of people this afternoon that do frequent that Taco Bell, or at least they did, they've actually stopped frequenting it, and I told them it was going to be upgraded and modernized, and I think they'll appreciate it, and they were thanking me for it, for doing that, and I said, "Well, I'm not doing it, I'm just looking at it and trying to, trying to make it a good, a good site plan." But they are, bumtown people at Taco Bell, and are glad to see some improvement out of this. Any more questions, Mr. Bell?
I've been in this a few times, and you know, the circulation is pretty poor, and I think that's a great solution. I think the corner needs something, the elevation, I think the architecture looks nice, and I think it'd be a good addition to South. You'd like to make a motion to support the special use request.
We don't need that, study session.
Oh. I like Florida. I'd like Florida hearing that next week.
Everybody good to hear, yes.
Okay, I guess that's quite open to the public, they might have the importance of the sun. Okay, well, I guess that wraps it up.
Good job.
If you stop by.
Okay, if you may. We do have a public hearing next week. I'll probably say this after each of your case, but this will be on your agenda next week for recommendation from the planning commission.
Yep. Is that saying so much more?
There's no waivers required on this one?
Um...
But I'm interested.
We'll deal with that through the site plan stuff. I don't need it there.
We're just in special year.
Yeah, that's why I went running out of my mouth, I was talking about that, and I said, "Well, maybe this wasn't the time to do that."
Give me a moment here.
Recapitulate.
Yeah, recapitulate, yes.
That's what I, I was.
Well, yeah, we need to build it.
Who's your next?
That was my goodness, my goodness. Right.
Just give me a moment here to change that. Okay, next item on your agenda is GP 1232, special use request, Pedilla Pharmacy. On behalf of the owner, Dr. Gupta, to permit a pharmacy and prescription center when located in or near medical office, medical clinic, hospital, penthouse, nursing home, or similar facilities in the O.S. Office Service District. In particular, this request is for the operation of a 1,283 gross square foot pharmacy within the existing medical office building located 23832 Southfield Road. This is on the southeast corner of Southfield Road in Mount Vernon, Section 25 of the city. As I noted, southeast corner, Southfield, Mount Vernon, existing medical office buildings. Directly to the north, we have veterinary clinic, as well as parking for an existing office building. This is Prescott School, and directly to the south, we have church here. Directly to the east, our single-family residence is fronting on Mount Vernon Street. Current zoning, O.S. Office Service, as is the zoning to the, directly to the west across Southfield Road, to the south, to the north, and with a small piece of ERO, Education Research Office on this property as well. If you recall, back in October, we had a similar request come before the planning commission for a pharmacy a little bit farther north on the west side of Southfield Road. So this was a similar circumstance. The building itself will be used for medical office clinic with the pharmacy in this 1,200 square foot area back over here. Yeah, special use within the O.S. Office Service District. As I noted before, you would think that something like this would be a permitted use, but it is a special use, and that is what the petitioner is here tonight for. With regards to the site plan, they're not changing anything on the site, really. They meet all their parking requirements based upon the makeup of the building for the medical office clinic and for the pharmacy itself. Other than that, there's no facade changes that are occurring. There will be some upgrades to the site, some things that need to be done from the standpoint of some restriping, taking some maintenance issues that I think would have to be taken care of as well, we'll take care of those through the administrative site plan approval. But tonight, what you're here for is the special use of whether to allow the pharmacy within that medical office building. Petitioner is here this evening, answering questions, or if you have anything to add, feel free, you can use this time right now for that.
Okay. Gentlemen, this is the next two there, there's a South Urgent Care, the opening, as you mentioned, this is a building is used for medical purpose, and the seventy-five percent or eighty percent of the portions is going to be occupied by South Urgent Care, and we're putting you in a small area. Actually, generally, we're going to use this much of area only, but this much we're going to use for only storage area, and here will be the patient reading room, and here will be the smart of area we're going to utilize for, only for the prescription of medications and things. We're not like a big chain store like CVS and Baldwin who carries like foods, vehicles, smoking, we're not going to carry all the stuff. It's just for the urgent prescriptions of medication who are turned by doctors and nearby all the people, so South Coast can use a pharmacy, so we're going to use a small pharmacy, independent chain, a small pharmacy.
Is there a pharmacy elsewhere? Are you relocating, or?
Yeah, we are.
Are you relocating from where?
From this area.
To the chair.
Yeah. Two questions. Two questions to turn. Does there have to be any construction done within that area to make this feasible to do what you want to do?
No, just we have to make, it's all been building, we have to just put the shelves and the walls.
Okay, so there's space there, you don't have to turn on one, do anything within it.
No, many changes.
Number two, your hours for having your pharmacy open are going to be the same hours that you have the others still open, and the hours are going to be different. What are your hours of operation?
Same hours, like nine to six.
Nine to six?
Is that daily?
Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday.
Nine to six.
Saturday, nine to two.
Hold on, yeah, hold on.
Nine to two what day?
Nine to two.
On Saturday.
Okay.
So is this operation here open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. There's no distinction made in zoning ordinance that it has to be just for the use within the building? The other one, if you recall, the other one was specifically for the doctors down the building. This one in particular, while it will serve the urgent care, is also.
Yeah, walking in.
So what percentage are you busy, you think it would be just walking in? Do you have any ideas?
Because it's a busy area, and there's some kind of apartments, and there's lots of doctor offices over here, too, so they can use as veterinary hospital over there. There's a couple of doctors over here, and this is the residence area, these are some kind of apartments, all the people can use, and you'll have delivery services to them, some older people cannot come and you can deliver the medication to them, too.
Okay. Are you going to have a drive-through, pickup window?
No, right now we don't have a plan of making it drive-through.
Okay, because I was by there this afternoon, riding around, and I noticed that this area is jetted out to the west, on the west side of the building.
So the back? 最初
I thought it looked like that. It has been since covered over.
Yeah, this is the drive-through for the Comerica Bank, and then...
And noticing that that's where you're going to put the pharmacy part, it would be easily converted back to a drive-through. Not that I would necessarily have a problem with it outside of the fact it needs to be shown on the plan, so we know how the stacking and so forth would go. But outside of that, the site looks like ample room for what you're trying to do. In fact, I'm particularly seeing that it's got more room than most other sites where people are trying to cram too many things into. And the entrances and exits seem to be relatively safe. I'm a little concerned about this northerly exit, northeast exit on Mount Vernon, being so close to the traffic light there. I could see during busy times of day, that could get a little hazardous, I guess, but it's already there, already existing. And I don't see a good point in either moving it or changing it. But outside of that, it looks pretty good on the surface to me.
If I may, with regard to, there was a mention about all the room, there's actually eighteen more parking spaces on site than you actually need, but I think it's better to have more spaces than not enough on site. So thirty spaces are required, they have forty-eight on site.
To the chair. I think also, if this is approved, that the residents will be happy about this. I think also, uh, if this approved, that the residents will be happy about this, 'cause, uh, we're going through some other things, uh, they can walk there, they can bike there, they can ride, and they have to get their, uh, so-called Mercedes is there, rather than getting their car and drive somewhere. So, I think, uh, with the buildings and the residents and the other commercial areas, I think this will be an asset to them, so, it looks good.
There is one other quick thing. When I was there, I noticed the area to the, on the western edge, and I see it from here as a access easement to the church. Is that actually this, this property is just an easement only for the...
No, it's actually separate piece of property.
Oh.
You can see the property line on the plan, actually, yeah.
So, the church actually owns that?
Yeah, the church actually owns it.
Oh.
The building is right here.
Right.
Actually, it's access to Mount Vernon, it is a right-hand turn only, or left-hand turn only, so it didn't allow left-hand turn or right-hand turns on this property. But, yeah, there's a separate driveway for the church. That was negotiation one.
But, but, but access from this property owned, owned to it, we have to get out?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I thought your arrangement made all sorts of nice little amenities for traffic flow, and it improved traffic flow immensely.
Uh, one little thing, I just, I noticed the bike rack on Southfield Road, I think that's great, awesome. I do actually ride my bike in that area, so, maybe I'll just park and just use it, you know, so, you can't say nobody ever uses it.
Staff is promoting that, on site plans that do come through now, and actually on the next tape, you'll see again, bike racks are doing well through, uh, things are gonna be coming before both planning commission and city council.
Good.
You have to pay enough.
All right, it's coming again.
Any more questions?
Just curious whether the pharmacy is a private company, or it's non-private as well?
It's a corporation.
A corporation, so separate, you know?
I own the building.
Okay.
He owns the property.
Okay.
You know, the question concerns...
Is this your first facility in Southfield, or...
Uh, yeah, yeah, this is the first.
In fact, you said you're moving from Lethal Village?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to... Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Where are you located, Lethal Village?
Yes.
Which street?
Um, Lethal Village, we are on the six ninety-six and Southfield, with, uh, the small areas, we want a little bit bigger ones, so, expand.
Do you anticipate more growth in the future, uh, within this building here?
Uh, this is, this area is a more, uh, like, so many traffics, and it's more visible, so I think so, there should be a more, uh, in the future might be cozy, you know?
Okay, uh, the public, anybody cautious, concerned, anyone? Okay, please stand and state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Gerard Muller, I live in seventeen eighty-eight in the east city. And I don't know your name, the commissioner here, but you said about your bicycle?
Bicycle rack.
Oh, they got a rack there?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I got a bicycle, and I never noticed it. I've tried, in fact, I was by there just today.
It's proposed.
It's proposed, yeah, yeah.
It's proposed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, hey, that's great, right.
Hey, hey.
I'm sure that gets in the right...
Right, right.
With, with yellow...
Okay, that's great.
Non-motorized, non-motorized traffic, working that, non-motorized traffic.
Well, I wasn't trying to mention it, but Mr. Bell, you, you were onto something on that exit. Now, I've lived there for forty-four years, they built that church in, um, they built the bank in nineteen seventy-seven. Huge amount of accidents, that, the Comerica was missing, was blank, from eighty, I think you bought it in ninety-six.
Yeah.
I mean, oh-six, oh-six. For eight years, there was no, there was no bank there, it was vacant. There was a huge amount of traffic accident at that very spot, and I can, I walk my dog by there, I bicycle, I was there today, uh, sometimes, sometimes three hundred times a year, okay? And I can tell you that if it's a little wet, especially in the winter time, what happens is the left-hand turns, the people, they, they just wanna turn off the, because they want, they, they, they don't know where they are.
Right.
They turn into there, they can't turn their right-hand turn. Bang, fender benders.
Right.
And I tell you, I don't know how many, there's gotta be thousands that have happened here. I don't know whether the city ever put that there, and I can, I'm an eyewitness, okay? I can be walking my dog, boom, okay? An eyewitness.
Yeah.
And I think that was, I don't know how these things are determined, but that is, you know, if you had an opportunity to help somebody, you know, have a, you know, I've only seen fender benders, I've never seen a serious accident in there.
Sure.
But even when it was vacant, that the accident, I'd say, wow! And of course, it only happens when it's a little wet, and the same thing when people sneak around making a legal right-hand turn on a stop, and the person goes left-hand turn, and then they're gonna turn into right-hand, that guy's sneaking in it, bang, 'cause it's so short. So, you were on to something, I wasn't even gonna mention it, 'cause that's, uh, but I just think, I just point that out.
Oh, okay. I really appreciate you doing that, because it is kind of obvious that it, that it's very close to that major ther, major ther, major intersection, and, uh, and, and so, uh, see very good, easily...
I refer to Mount Vernon as Mount Vernon Expressway.
Okay.
I had trouble getting out, 'cause see, I use, you know, that little, that little, uh, what you would, might say, things that ease them, of course, I use that, okay? I'm having trouble making...
Sure.
Uh, onto, just turning left.
Right.
It's so, uh, it's, the traffic is so, so bad. I can tell you why that easement is, well, it's not easement, they own the, Sambo's Restaurants used to own that property, back in the early seventies, and we protested. They're gonna build Sambo's there, that's probably why you have that twenty-five foot, uh, about to ease, they own the property, like they say.
Access.
So, I just give you a little historical, I'm, I'm surmising that. I still got the map for that property, by the way. Uh, but what I was here for was, uh, I'm kinda curious why I got a legal notice. The reason why is when they built the bank in seventy-seven, I didn't get any notices. And I'm surmi, I, and I'm surmising that the, the reason why you send out notices, the reason why we're here, 'cause I just bought this book, you know, the zoning book, is that under section five, point two-two dash one, that's the authority that we're here for, and that's why, that's why the notices were sent out. Now, they say three hundred feet. How is that determined?
That's determined from the property lines...
Lot line to lot line.
Lot, lot, yeah, from the lot lines all the way around on all four sides, we go three hundred, actually, we go three hundred and fifty feet...
Yeah, I saw the...
On all sides.
Yeah, I saw the minutes previous, the three fifty. So, what I, okay, then, this is just point of information, it's nothing to do with the pharmacy. If that was a vacant lot today, and they were gonna build a church, or, or they're gonna build, let's say, a pharmacy or a bank, like Comerica Bank, would I receive a notice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, either they changed the rules, or there was administrative errors going back thirty-four years.
It's probably been changed.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just...
I would have to say that's possible.
No, I'm just, see, I don't do this for a living.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? And this is all new to me, and I was just kinda surprised, in the back of my mind, I figured, Comerica Bank is out of my territory, so I was kinda surprised, and then I got, and I, then I did a little research, I got this, I looked into it, and I, I saw the three-hundred-foot limit and all that, and that's all.
Yeah, that's what the state now requires, and as, and as Jeff said, we go a little further than that.
And I saw three fifty, okay.
Right.
So, in the olden days, and you were probably here, Mr. Bell, from a little school, eh? In the olden days, that part, maybe there was a shorter limit or something, or it wasn't necessary.
Or may not have been necessary.
Yeah, I, I saw, I'm surmising. I just, a point of information.
Right.
The pharmacy is, is better than I, okay?
Right.
It's not gonna change anything, you think? And it's better the building be occupied...
O S.
Because they used to have, they used to sell cars there, and things like that.
Yeah, it's been...
And so, when you're talking...
Like the vacant, you know, some of the pipes outside were cut and taken away, so...
Pikes?
Some of the outside pipes were cut and taken away, so...
Pipes?
Yeah.
What do you mean pipes? Oh, you mean...
People stealing, stealing.
Yeah.
When it was vacant, when, when the building was vacant, people would steal the pipes of the outside, exterior pipes.
Oh, you mean like the drains?
Right.
Oh!
So, that's why I'm glad that somebody's gonna move in there, right?
Oh, oh, you mean even while you were gone?
While I was gone, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Why? That's pretty bright.
I know, I know.
Well, that's right on the, that's, that's in the center of the universe.
Right, up here. The back pipe, on the other side, where the...
Okay, no, I...
Not on the main road, but...
But, okay, it isn't in the back. Wow! I know houses that are nearby, they cleaned out, you know, copper. I was surprised, just, just drain pipe?
I don't know what they're made of, but just, like, you know, probably...
Wow!
Okay, well, thanks for stepping in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Chair, do you have anything?
Thank you, sir.
The great...
Sorry, you're off, Phil, thank you.
Yeah, again, uh, on your schedule for next week for application.
Okay. What?
Lord, you know, this guy, this guy, coming to tell a new age, man. They're telling a new age.
Well, there was a time when it was secret.
No, they don't think no more.
I'm not ashamed of it.
All right, okay. I hope I'm able to get there.
Yeah.
All right, sure.
We're almost there.
Three, three, we're on thirty-three.
Yeah, we're doing the straight here.
Excellent, gentlemen.
I don't know.
Thirty-three.
Oh, what? I wonder if we can be anywhere else in this case?
You mean this? Oh, this, 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 I mean, this is a new territory for project people.
This is the one.
New project, huh?
Give me a minute, boy.
Yeah, for, for, for the record, I'll just say that my, my grandfather was a going gloves boxing champion of New York State.
The guy you love, huh?
I have membership over there.
And he, uh, he fought in the, uh, National A and U Championship, Boston Square Garden, with Bill Lewis, with, uh, Michigan Going Gloves Boxing Champ, the away classes, but that's my claim to fame.
That's a good thing, same half. 'Cause that name, Crunk, is known. These five boys.
I'm gonna have to look that up maybe yesterday.
Next, you're building up here, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, next item on your agenda is EP twelve thirty-three, uh, special use request, uh, to, again, this is industrial zoning, uh, to permit a non-industrial use, or use not specifically related to manufacturing in the I One Industrial zoning district. Uh, for this particular request, uh, this is to establish a seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-six gross square foot crunk gym in the existing building located at two three zero eight zero Southfield Road. Site is on the south, I'm sorry, site is on the east side of Telegraph Road, just north of Nine Mile Road. Uh, directly to the north, uh, we have a, um...
Repair shop?
Repair shop, I'm sorry.
Took it.
You know more about than I do.
No, you, you probably know this is my name.
I just came about out of the day, that's all, I mean, I know about it.
I was just guessing, it's a repair shop, 'cause there's a tow truck.
There's a tow, yeah.
Um, yeah, we have repair facilities to the north of here. I thought that this was rental pros, but I could be wrong. Um, directly to the south, White Castle Restaurant, uh, directly to the west, across Telegraph Road, and we have Taco Bell, we have a bank. Uh, directly to the east, uh, we have single-family residential, uh, houses that are fronting on Bush Street. With regard to the zoning, I One Industrial, with I One Industrial to the north, to the south, and to the west, and again, single-family residential directly to the east. Uh, what the petitioner is proposing is to use the entire building for a crunk gym. Um, currently, they have a lot of, uh, members who come to the gym in Detroit, they're looking to facilitate or trying to meet the needs of, of the people that are to the north in this area here, and, uh, felt it, uh, would help their current patrons if, if there was a place closer, a place in Open County, and show Southfield as, as that location. Um, with regard to the site itself, and again, you're, you're dealing with the special use, not the site plan, we'll deal with that again because of time of zoning. Uh, they do meet their parking requirements. Uh, you'll notice, directly to the west of the building, there's a bike rack for ten stops.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, they're also adding a new dumpster, uh, they're redoing the lot, uh, restriping, and basically, that's the issue with this particular, uh, location of the petitioner is here today, and, uh, let them kind of come up, and if, if they have anything to add, uh, do you want to talk about the...
Oh, yeah, a few things, sure. Good evening, gentlemen, my name's Andy Donato, Facility Management Partners, representing Manuel Stewart. Um, I got some pictures here, actually, uh, 'cause I think one of the questions that would come up, kind of printed these last minute, gentlemen. What it is, this is the, um, back-in area, excuse me, this is the back-in area, if you were to back out of this parking place here, um, those pictures represent the posts, so you don't have to worry about the cars actually hitting the building if they back up. That was important at some point, as far as, like, you know, fully backing out of the area, not having a back-in area, so, um, hours, our, hours of operation here, they're gonna be looking at probably seven in the morning to eight at night, tentatively, um, they're gonna be circulating their clients through, probably four to six at a time, depending on, you know, appointment times, and then they're gonna have, obviously, a trainer, trainer with the, the person boxing, or the two people boxing, so, um, I think we just had heard from Dave and Alan, and actually, Alan is the, uh, broker record for the acquisition from Court Partners, and, um, he is here representing Emmanuel also, along with, uh, Emmanuel's direct broker from, uh, I'm sorry, your last name.
David Wack.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dave. Um, so, Emmanuel couldn't be here, he's in Europe currently.
He got back late last night.
Oh, he did, okay. So, he couldn't be here, you are correct in all respects, that he wants to stand out of Detroit and, uh, get to the suburbanites, as he calls them, to try to gain some more traction on the market out here in Southfield and Open County, so, um, I'm not sure what else I can tell you about it. We did make these changes here because of the parking here, we know, we recognize, we're gonna have to put this new concrete in here, the whole lot is concrete now, okay?
Through the chair, just, since this is, we're dealing with the use and not specifically the site plan.
Okay.
Um, a couple things, just a clarification on the hours of operation, you said Monday through Friday?
Seven AM to eight in the evening.
Okay, what about weekends?
Yeah, seven days a week, and that's tentative hours of operation.
Right.
Seven to eight, seven days a week.
Yeah, I don't think he has his business plan complete yet, but that's standard.
And, and the intent was, if I heard you correctly, this is basically appointment, this is not a walk-in type of facility.
Right.
So, there will be a limited number of, of people coming only at any one time.
Right, there's gonna be just a few, uh, walk-ins, actually, five, possibly, uh, submergence that he's managing, so, there's a case, that's it.
This is not like an open gym, where people come in...
No, it's not a retail center.
Right, an hour or something.
No, no, it's gonna be...
By appointment only.
Appointment only, training.
Through the chair, if you could talk about, maybe, like, previous uses at this...
Actually, that's what I was just gonna have Alan say, because Alan has, uh, a long history with the building, his father owned it for, I don't know how long, Alan.
Yeah, um, I actually represent the landlords, uh, which is Bonnie Frye. Um, I'm actually very, very familiar with the building. The building itself, for the last at least thirty years, has never been used as a manufacturing or light industrial usage. It's always been used as a commercial, and it goes all the way back to probably three uses ago, my father owned a company called Sentimental Journey, that moved in there just after Jefferson Beach Marina, um, if you're familiar, when Jefferson Beach Marina moved out, then it was, as a classic car showroom for many, for many years, and then the Fryes acquired it, and it went into, I think it was called Auto, it was called Auto One, or Auto Zone, or Auto One, that was the prior tenant. Right, and then the existing tenant, which is White, White Reproduction, has been in there for the last, uh, ten years, okay? Um, so if you look at the, the use of the, of the property, it's never been used as a manufacturing or light industrial building, it's always been used as a commercial.
Commissioner Bill?
Uh, if I could, uh, I was out there and rode around the, the property separately, or at least behind it and so forth, you don't, you don't go around. But, uh, I know currently, there seem to be, I presume, from your neighbors to the north, a lot of cars, in fact, this whole area here, uh, that's it, right there, uh, on the north side, was just stacked up with cars, I presume that your neighbors using it, uh...
That is, that is correct. Um, the existing tenants over here, um, has come to White Reproduction, and they need some additional parking, and that's why, if they could just park their cars here. Once, um, if, if we're successful in this rezone, and Emmanuel does take possession of the building, um, there will be no other, there will be no vehicles there. Because we're gonna use that as, leave it as gravel, okay, which is existing, and use that as emergency.
Access. My, because my major concern, uh, and my question to you is, do you feel that the parking that is marked out on the site is adequate?
Yes, yes, more than adequate, yes.
Okay, uh, because that was my original concern, but given what you just said, that this is not a, probably earlier, a walk-in, training gym, is...
It's not like a powerhouse gym, where anybody can just go there and, uh, apply for a membership, and they take everybody, it's, it's all gonna be private.
Okay, and do you...
And by appointment only.
And do you intend to have, uh, matches there, uh, where, where you have spectators and so forth?
To the best of my knowledge, no. I think if they do, it's gonna be invite-only, as we said.
Because you could run out of parking union.
Very easily. We talked to him about this, a great one, explained that to him, he's very comfortable with the fact that, you know, he's got thirty-one spaces, less than two for the bike rack, but he's pretty comfortable with it. And we, we were very open and honest with him, and said, you know, we recognize, we have a limitation here, which is parking, and, you know, um...
And particularly given the fact that you're on a major thoroughfare, and, and if, and if you've got a parking problem, they're gonna be backed up on the Telegraph Road.
Right.
It's not a hazard place, and that could be...
Right.
So I, I'll take you as your word, that you've got what you need, for the use, you know, then...
To, to, okay, to the chair, what I was gonna ask, other question, that there will be no, quote, for entertainment, I was gonna ask that. When I was out there yesterday, I, just my point, the, uh, I call it the screening wall, that backs up to the resident.
Yeah.
That, that looks pretty good, and I, I'm conscious now, that any time there's something that backs up to the neighborhood, we got issues. So I, I, the wall looks okay to me now, was there any plan to do anything out there to that wall? Looks okay, but I was just concerned about the neighbors.
No, not at this point, I mean, I guess, if nothing else, you could paint it, you know, that would be probably the only thing I know that's...
Okay, it looks good. Yeah, I saw, I looked at the wall, it looked good, I looked at the lighting, it looked good, and I was just concerned, you know, that, uh, we were okay with the wall, and we're gonna have an open hearing, and the neighbors come, so I just didn't wanna hear that.
Yeah, sure.
And so the wall...
We actually looked at the wall yesterday when we were there.
Yeah.
And it was actually in very, very good shape.
Good shape, the wall looked absolutely...
There's some minor tuck pointing, like in this area, but it's very minor.
Uh, as far right, yeah. I saw two or three blocks there in the far end, and maybe, but the wall looked good, now, I was just concerned.
And of course, as far as your operation, will this be pretty much the same as it is in Detroit, the same kind of operation, is this totally different from what you do in Detroit?
He didn't, I'm actually not familiar with his operation, I don't know either, I'm just going by what he recommended, that he was gonna, his use was gonna be for the space.
What, what I do remember him saying is that, that's part of the, the channel, that some of the professional suburbanites who are going down to the, to the, uh, original gym, there's a lot of walk-ins because of tourists, because of the store, and this is more of a private, you know, one-on-one training facility. And so I think in that respect, it's gonna be different than the gym down in Detroit. That's what I remember Emmanuel saying.
Yeah, he, he did state that to us, too, he said he wants to go after some, you know, northern Open County upscale clients, is what he calls them, and wants to, uh, get them on their lunch breaks, and, you know, get them on their breaks in the afternoon, and try to get them in their boxing and exercises, and, you know, they're gonna obviously have trainers, I don't know how he structured in that manner, whether it's trainers that work directly for him, or if they're private trainers, but, you know, the trainer will show up, a boxer will show up, and they'll box together or separate, and they're gonna train on bags, and, you know, do what boxers do, you know?
Commissioner Lee, uh, I was just wondering, are there any, uh, plans for exterior improvements to the building at all?
Yeah, there is, not to the building itself, um, just to the site, you know, we've got some landscaping that's gonna go around the sign. Um, I noticed, we've got these here late this afternoon, as you guys know, um, there was supposed to be a low hedge here, to mirror the one that's here in front of this bike rack, so there'd be some symmetry in the front, on both sides of that sign, didn't make it here, I don't know why, um, that, we can make sure that gets on there for next week. Uh, we do have this locust tree that we have here, which is a hardy, you know, breed, as you know, that'll take the salt, you know, it should grow and thrive. This, um, there's also gonna be a low hedge here to cover the cars, um, because they're closer to the road. Um, there is an existing U-hedge here, that, uh, exists in front of the building, it's in great shape, it's not too overgrown, it's only, you probably noticed it, it's only, like, two and a half, three feet tall. Um, he hasn't decided what he wants to do with that canopy yet, so we're not quite sure, you know, what...
You do something with that canopy.
Yeah.
The canopy needs some reconstruction.
Yeah, there's...
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's old, and, you know, my thought is, he's gonna wanna brand it, and obviously, that's gonna be a separate, you know, here, and we get into sign it to the city and try to get their acceptance on. But he wants it to pop, he wants it to, you know, we want somebody to drive by, and he wants to see crap, big and bold, and he wants people to know that, that, that he's there, you know, so, um... And I think he's got that exposure, you know, on that road, that's for sure.
Yeah, do it.
So, um, that's the improvement, obviously, site improvements, you know, we're gonna restrip, obviously. Um, we do gotta make sure that these barrier-free spots, you know, here, these signs, they're, they're closed now, um, you know, the site improvement back here, again, I gotta put concrete in here. We've gotta put this dumpster enclosure here, that's already here now, and, um, there is a small concrete repair here that's noted, that, um, needs to be rectified, too.
Uh, one quick question, if I could, to the chair, uh, being there's residents to the west, uh, and I noticed that there's at least two exterior lights there on, on the wall, or at the wall.
Right, here on the, on the...
Right, and you need to ensure that they are shining away from the residents, and into your parking lot.
You're talking about on the east? Yeah.
You know, oh, you're right, east, east.
It's clear to walk, it's in the west, and it's clear to walk.
Yeah, I don't think I have a picture of them here, but, yeah, they're your typical building flood-type light, that doesn't go sideways, so the, the throw is forward, on both of those lights.
Um, but that, those lights, or any other lights at your house here, you know, if you have any on the building, shining backwards, it...
I don't think there is any on the building. You know, I'm not a hundred percent sure if there's any floods on the, uh, exterior of the building.
Just, just to ensure that there's nothing shining backward on the residents, or, or into your neighbors, is what I...
Well, the, the, the White Castle next door, I'm sure, probably, I think it's lit up pretty well.
Right.
Um, I'm sure, you know, probably it may even cover these spots, so, um, we'll just, we'll let and see if there's anything on the exterior of the building in terms of floods. But I don't think there's anything out there at all. These two lights cover the whole back, and then it's pretty clear up front.
Uh, something that you mentioned that, that is, uh, at least a little concerned to me, is, uh, I, I agree that, that, that a crunk building in Southfield needs to, as you put it, pop, and it needs to really catch your eye, uh, but at the same time, and I know that there's, there's lots of windows in the front of this building, and we, we have a pretty strict sign ordinance in Southfield, and, uh, uh, but we, we, it seems that we have a relatively lenient ZBAs on board of fields, which also oversees signage. And, uh, I would, I would encourage you to be careful about putting signage in, in all the windows, uh, to, to me, that's, that's...
I don't think that's what he actually wants. Yeah, he wants the opposite of that. Yeah, he wants the opposite, he wants you to see it. He wants everybody to be able to see inside, see what's going on.
Sounds, sounds like my kind of place.
We're wiping out all of the interior offices and everything in there, so you can't see through. He wants people driving by to be able to see him working out boxing.
You went the direction, you went the direction I hope you would.
That's what Emmanuel said.
Yeah, I do, the reason I, it's, uh, Commissioner, the reason I think you said about the pop is that the canopy...
Exactly.
That's, okay, it wasn't, it's putting some up there, crunks or whatever you may, is to have that canopy lit up, so that pops out to the public, they come by.
Exactly.
That's what I, okay.
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I had it in my mind.
Commissioner Lee?
I would do, probably be a good idea for the next meeting to have maybe a poll match, or show what's going on.
I already got that on my list here.
Okay. Uh, gotta compliment you on the bike rack again.
Way to coach Eric.
A better location, and I don't wanna open up a can of worms here, but what if this is some sort of a sculptural bike rack, that gets higher up in the air, sculptural boxing bag or punching bag built into it, kind of lets you know what's going on inside, brings a little more attention to, you know, health aspect of it. I don't know if it's in the setbacks, or...
Yeah, the only issue is that, uh, the sign official wouldn't, anything that's, um, like that would be considered part of the signage. Not that it's not a bad idea, but he's gonna look at, um, there was a robotic that was proposed at one of our manufacturing, and he interpreted that as part of the sign, so, anything that duns with that, you'd have to change that requirement to the overall requirement.
Would reduce sending a message or something, was...
That would reduce, that would reduce. But I think there are, there are things that, um, if you submit your, your building elevation to us, we can make some recommendations and some peaceful ways of doing it without violating the sign code.
Yeah, and, and it was like you were stating, if, if it's more of an art piece, as opposed to a signage-type piece, uh, it, it might get past head.
Actually, I have a photo from Grand Valley, where they, they had these sculptural canopies, and the bikes actually go up them.
Yeah.
But, but if, as long as it's not iconic to boxing, or to whatever's going on, then it becomes art versus signage.
Right.
That's all.
They go up, it's like art bar near, uh, near the stadiums, and the same thing, it's all metal sculpture. Exactly.
Yeah, that's good.
Simple.
And I catch you, too, yep.
It's, uh, be good, uh, good spot to showcase it.
I saw one of the Grand Rapids, that is nice, it does kinda catch, all right.
Yep.
I think it's a good use for crunk, be there.
Mm-hmm.
No, I, I, yeah, it sounds like it's me, yep.
Absolutely.
Right, right. Good site.
Yeah.
And you gotta go past the site plan, or something like that.
Well, they're, they're the site plan, we're just doing special use this time.
Okay, any, any other questions, concerns?
Let me get it somewhere, I'm...
Please, I'm great, yeah.
Right there, beside there.
Just tell me that, I'm sorry.
Again, this is on your agenda for next week, uh, for record, Dave, um, please, the questions or the comments with regard to the elevation is duly noted, we'll make sure that we have an elevation on the front for next week.
Right.
And, uh, we'll make sure we, we want to make sure we have a decent copy of that elevation.
Hey, I guess we all fit, and that's coming.
Yeah, make sure it exists, so, just that you did the best, and that color vendor.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You just make sure that everybody knows that.
Right. Bring those boxes, bring those boxes, like, like you say. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Those boxes, like, like you say.
And Grand Rapids, they're really, Grand Rapids, everywhere.
I booked up a data signage gym.
In fact, I'm going to a signage training, uh, like, January twelfth.
Bring back my D S, we're...
Um, we've been, we've been here on the second, the minutes from November second to November ninth, they're pretty minimal.
Outside looking in.
Uh, first, the, November twelfth was actually a meeting that went, and ended up having to adjourn to November thirtieth, because of like the form. Uh, then the November ninth meeting, uh, just references that we had the transit study meeting that...
I have mine, because that's what we're, uh, in that, that's what I'm working on. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, you did a good job, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
We'll report to you next week.
Guys, uh, just to let you know, the meeting's gonna be in...
In the big room.
Yeah, the big room next month, thank you, great.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, I'm just saying, be careful out there.
Yep.
You know, I thought it was interesting, and they're having, uh, uh, bikes for type. Yeah, sir? There's a hundred and fifty... You can go take a couple pictures of that, for...
And I guess I ought to get some bikes and tires from my grand son.
I feel you, you can bike your capital edition.
Well, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was having a little sign trouble with them, but, uh, we did present, um, you know, Cox was here Monday night, and our team presented, um, an initial PowerPoint presentation on our, our bike pathway study, that was well-received by the council.
Very well received, and one, two, three, four, five to one.
I forgot either one was...
Land. Hey, no, no, it wasn't, I mean, next, I was like, you're right, you know, I was like, you're right, you know.
Five, I guess, you know, you're not a bike?
How many, how many times did you write Dream World?
Yeah, he said, right, yeah, he said, right, yeah.
I got the distinct impression, he didn't know what he, he thought that you, that the ten thousand dollars, or less than ten thousand dollars, was for the whole project.
Yeah, that was one thing.
And he, he just couldn't grasp the concept of what you presented.
And it's not only just bikes, it's non-motor transit, but, but that's my buddy, that's my neighbor's bike, and talks about it, but we took note.
And the fact that this was just a plan, this, that, this, this was not doing the work.
But you know how you know, whenever it comes to the people, there's always, you know, they know him, you've been knowing him longer than I have, I'm starting to...
I'm afraid so.
I'm gonna get out of here.
Any other miscellaneous business?
Uh, there was something I wanted to mention, no, no, after the meeting, I'm sorry.
I guess, uh, needs adjourned.
Uh, the seventeenth, after...